Counselor Geller, Teresa, you are releasing the pledge.
I plead to the citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody got the minutes from the last meeting emailed to them. Do you need a minute?
Did everybody get emailed? I didn't get anything.
Yeah.
Yeah. Abby, I got it from Abby, yeah.
I'll double check if you have your old email address.
No, I've been, Claire, I've been getting everything up until now, so.
Okay, I'll double check.
Okay.
You read them yet, Kenny? You need a minute?
No, I'm good, yeah, I read them.
Good? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
That's, I'll second.
Kenny makes a motion, Bill seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Twenty twenty-three salary ordinance adoption. I don't have a copy of it here, but... You want us to move on while you're getting one?
Yes, please.
Okay. Sheriff's Department, two additionals.
Good morning.
Morning.
And I believe, as I told you, January meeting, I was going to be attending this today. I am asking for an additional deputy, specifically Chief Deputy's position. Game of Bob Ray left two and a half days before the prior administration, that position itself had not been filled. So I'm asking to restore that position at the base pay of three to ten thousand rank pay for that position. Caviar, obviously, I'll ask for any additional anymore the rest of this year or next year. If we get this position to be out, people can fit shape, we still do it this year, please. So that's my request.
So you're using that salary to pay Blodgett now?
When we started here, we were down five jail deputies, the extra deputies. Plus, there was an additional position this year for transportation officer. Had not been filled yet, so there's money there that we could use. If we haven't had positions filled at this point.
Okay, so you're taking budget and salary dollars temporarily.
Temporarily fill that position yet. And there is a caveat also that because there's one deputy, so I do have a spot, it's empty. But in a perfect world, what I'm asking for is to fill that position along with this Chief Deputy position.
So you're asking to add another full-time person?
I am. The numbers are up, we're, we're up right now.
Well, from what the additional is and what you, the paper you gave us at that executive session, I'm trying to figure out where we're at here. Because you're asking for a hundred and ten thousand is what I've got that you asked for.
That includes the benefits, yes.
Yeah. I'll tell you where I'm at. You're down one deputy right now.
Correct.
You know, from the last administration, if you add Blodgett in, you're at where he was, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I can't add a hundred and, me personally, I cannot earn ten thousand to a budget that we're already six hundred thousand over. I can see giving you a ten thousand additional for his rank pay and waiting until next year and see what happens. That's me, that's me, that's me, that's me. That's, that's me. There's six of us here. Ernie, you get that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I tend to agree with you, Dan. It'd be nice to have an extra deputy or get back to where we were with deputies, but I think we need to find, finance it within the budget. Play for it, really, just do an additional.
Well, I do, and that's, that's just me now, Sheriff.
Sure.
You understand where I'm at?
I understand completely, yeah.
You know, because...
So just so clear, you have, you have a position at base pay that you can use to pay that, but we need to appropriate the rank pay to get him up to the position. Yes, okay. And I, I kind of feel like Ernie does. Right now, we can't drop another full-time person in there. We got the money to pay where we are, take that money from that position that's not being filled, let's use that, get him up to rank pay, and then we'll see where we are when the budget time comes around next year. We'll get you something for now.
Well, if it's, anybody else have any discussion? Any questions? I'll entertain a motion of a...
Hey, I think he gets some money to do what he wants with Blodgett right now. And maybe he can find some money in Commissary or somewhere to add these additional deputies.
Okay.
We're struggling with Commissary right now.
Oh, no.
Because at the beginning of the year, we have very little balance. So at this point in time, Commissary is really not in play. It could be later in the year.
Didn't you have a vehicle you had to take out of that or something?
Correct. I had to pay for a vehicle in January at Commissary.
And we can approve an additional less than what was advertised, correct, Jan?
You can approve anything up to what was advertised.
I'll entertain a motion to, to rank pay only.
I'll make that motion.
Bill next one?
We allow the ten thousand dollars for rank pay. And that, and you will have the same amount of deputies, right? You're not down, not adding one, yeah.
I'll say that.
Ernie, seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
My second, I'm sorry. I have my second request, and on January twenty-fifth, we received a check for fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars from the sale of one of our vehicles. And I'm attending the Travers Office, I'm requesting that be moved from Cumcap to pay for equipment for the new car.
I'm trying to find that one, Sheriff. Here, Sheriff vehicle sale, six thousand.
You want to take it from Cumcap to...
You, you just...
That wasn't advertised. I mean, it was sent to us, and it's been advertised, but it wasn't timely for this meeting. So it'll be, thank you, Teresa.
So it'll be next meeting?
It'll be the next meeting. It is advertised timely for that.
Okay.
I mean, he can talk about it, but you can't.
We can't, dude.
We can't, oh. What's the one for six thousand I've got here then, Jan?
Is it six thousand for equipment?
No, it's got Sheriff, Sheriff vehicle sale for trade-in of an old vehicle. Fund named Cumcap, six thousand.
So, and they're probably asking, whatever money he gets for sales of whatever vehicles, it has to go back into Cumcap if that's where it was paid for? But it goes into the cash, and he's asking to add it to that vehicle line?
Was that six thousand spent?
This...
It's fifteen thousand, two hundred seventy.
Fifteen, yeah, I don't know what that's...
Does Cumcap have a vehicle line?
Yes, it has a vehicle.
It has a vehicle line?
Correct. But it's for...
Can we do both these next month?
That's up to you.
I mean, I just, can we bunch them up together?
Just for clarity, the six thousand dollars is from the car that stole, stole it in the year last year.
Okay, okay. I just don't want to have yours on six thousand, I didn't...
Would it make a difference if we do them together, like if we wait?
Is that okay?
You're good on cars, because we don't, we didn't add anybody, so, but you got guys coming out of the academy.
Correct. Again, they're pretty inherent that we're really high mileage, starting to nickel and dime this a definite maintenance. We're trying to get caught up, but rotating cars in and out.
Kenny, anything else for us? Thanks, Sheriff. Now, do you have to redo this additional on ten thousand that says sixty-three before we sign it?
You just, if you will write the amount and initial it?
Okay.
Then, no, we don't have to rewrite that.
Good enough. We'll do that here in just a minute. Okay, let's move on. Teresa, on the pool.
I came before the Commissioner yesterday asking for their guidance and thoughts on how to proceed with the pool that we know is in desperate need of a lot of repairs, upgrades, whatever. Hopefully, the end result will be a new aquatic center for the community. The Fishers did vote yesterday to close the pool, keep the pool closed in twenty twenty-three, to move forward and with a plan of action, waiting possibly to see about the ready grants and the different funding that we can come along with, with whatever. Today, I've got Brian Robbins with me, or here, I guess he's not with me, but he's here, and he's going to present some information to you about some figures and facts and data that they, our committee has compiled because we have been meeting since early last year, early, yeah, early twenty-two.
Yeah, and I want to first, first to form up, say that I'm here as a citizen in a number of parks and recreation. I'm not here representing the economic...
You have to speak up a little bit so Ernie can hear too, okay?
Doesn't sound like, is that my concept?
It's barely, you're okay. Okay, all right. I'll take these and pass them down here. This is some, some number crunching. We'll first, this, and just take one, pass, pass it down. The task of this, of this committee, as we see it, and it's just a group, here's the words, is to actually take the dilemma of the current pool and kind of evaluate what the possibilities are. And not only evaluate those possibilities, but also the possibilities that the county can absolutely afford. Those are the possibilities. The argument for, first of all, most of the argument for keeping the pool and maybe enhancing the pool is on this Shelby County and North Vernon study. That's, that's something that we've been looking at those two pools, because obviously, they're the closest vicinity. See, like, an example, in North Vernon, ninety-one visitors to that pool are actually from outside the North Vernon zone. So you talk about a draw, these pools go back like a draw on the other side. And I'm not going to go through all these stats or anything like that. But just from the Shelby pool alone, a thousand people from, Decatur County actually go to the Shelby pool. And that's a thousand visitors, that's not a thousand visitors, that's a south, a thousand unique visitors go to the Shelby pool, go out of our county, actually, go swimming, certainly, at open sea. And then furthermore, on that, on that sheet, a lot, a lot of this has been taken from an application called Placer. If the tourist in office, it's a geofencing program that actually accounts for where people are at certain times thanks to, to, let's call it geofencing, all their cell phones and whatnot. So obviously, not everybody, most people have cell phones, but probably just some. In that respect, we're from those parts, we're pretty accurate as far as, as far as somebody does estimates. So we, we feel it's actually pretty, pretty wise to take the infrastructure that we have, that being that little pool, something that's around sixty years old, really doesn't cost any money or anything like that, and, and continue to invest in, in it and maybe enhance it. So it can be that draw. We think particularly with it next to all, all diamonds right there, we have the fairgrounds right there, the park, everybody knows where it's located, it's still kind of a highlight of, shall we say, recreation for the, not only the city, but the county as a whole, to let that go or to, you know, put good money after bad probably wouldn't be the wisest, wisest thing. So we do have a concept. You guys, I think, have seen that, that concept. We used, was complex with us to establish that. Teresa's been doing a wonderful job of background research, covering other schools, determining, you know, what the increased visitation were after, the, the upgrades to various schools and what have you, as well as crunching the numbers as far as what it would, what it would cost, an estimated budget for a new upgrade to the pool as far as not only facilities and stuff, but labor, but also complemented with the fact that an estimate more people would be coming in at a possible higher price. That all being said, this, this group is, is looking at ways of possibly funding it. Of course, we do have ready funds as well as ARPA funds dedicated to it. But that will not be enough to, to actually be able to report the, the, all the amenities that the, have been in the design as well as ones that have been asked for by the public. So we're looking at all options, and again, I want to stress that this, this committee is, is, one, we're not shoving anything down anybody's throats or anything like that, we're just trying to investigate all options that we have for the, for the community to, to afford an upper pool. On this sheet, we've, we've taken a look at, at something called the food and beverage tax. Something that's been implemented, implemented by a lot of different counties and cities throughout the, the state. The closest one to us is Shelby County, has a one percent food and beverage tax. Johnson County, otherwise, close by, that has a one percent food and beverage tax. This is a strictly a consumption tax. It's on any, any prepared food or anything like that. So everything from, you know, McDonald's to gas stations or whatever, that big gulp that people walk in, they pay a one percent on that. That one percent tax would be then dedicated to usually quality of life. It can be, there's limits as to what it can be used for. It can't just go into the general fund somewhere and be dissipated or what have you. It's got to be a designated use or a sector of use. A lot of times, many of these go towards quality of life and issues via events centers, that sort of thing. So we feel that this would be an option for funding for the pool if, if the county does want to pursue it. We wanted to assess, we did a survey through the chamber, we really appreciate the cooperation, Chamber of Commerce, again, not endorsement, but, I'll endorse the Chamber of Commerce, but the chamber is, is not endorsement. They allowed us to survey the numbers, they outlined what the food and beverage tax is, what the tax would be on. We got back seventy-three responses, forty of those in favor and thirty-three not in favor. Some of the comments were very informative for us and kind of guided us in exactly what we needed to tackle, what questions we wanted to, we needed to address. There was concern on whether this would, would restrict growth or existing on the pop restaurants. Looking at Shelbyville and Johnson, who've had it for a number of years, we do not see that to have hampered any sort of development in that area. Certainly, if you look at Northern Indianapolis, it hasn't hampered any sort of development in Northern Indianapolis or anything like that. As far as a burden on the Decatur County resident, using the place or advocacy on the front page of this document, one of the most telling is that fifty-two percent of restaurant visits are non-Decatur County residents. So in this sense, over fifty percent, just, just over fifty percent of this tax would be paid on non-Decatur County residents. So that's, that's telling. Now, the real question is, and, and I won't, again, I won't go through all the stats there. You'll see, we did give the stats for Mr. McDonald's and St. Paul and McDonald's in Greensburg, and how much funds those, those places of business would bring in, an estimated, to, a year, on just one percent of what they've, of what they've earned. I deep, we, we point out that in Shelby County right now, Decatur County residents are paying seventeen thousand dollars in food and beverage taxes over in Shelby County. So if we can kind of capture some of that, that'd be great. But we want to highlight, too, that, that, you know, one of, one of our assets, as I said before, obviously, we are happening between Cincinnati and Indianapolis. And to capitalize on one of those assets, we think this, this rally would be advantageous, particularly with the St. Paul Loves, which we calculate, again, using geofencing in the, in the Placer app, that ninety, ninety-nine point one percent of Loves travel stops are from non-Decatur County residents. So we'd be able to capture that input into our local coffers and to put, put any sort of funding toward what we want. The, another, the Pedro in St. Paul's, ninety-five point nine percent, non-Decatur County. So, and those are, of, of visitors are non-Decatur County residents. So, and this is all through geofencing, using the cell phone and such. You know, there could be some fluctuation there, but the bottom line is that there's a tremendous amount of non-Decatur County folks that are always stopping at these trucks, truck shops. To take the full advantage of that would be, you know, in our best interest potentially for things like that. Last page gives you an idea of what was taken in in twenty twenty-two for those counties, not, I didn't, with any cities, but those counties that have the food and beverage taxes. You have everything from Allen County bringing in ten million dollars to, you know, to Johnson County, which, we're trying to figure out Johnson County, that seems remarkably low for us, dollars and some of the others. And we were just talking about that this morning, we need to look a little bit more on that. And the math there, you know, currently, and this is also one of the reasons we're investigating this, and I think Deanna has brought this up, was that currently we have an option or opportunity to take advantage of the state session right now to possibly get on a bill to allow for food and beverage taxes Decatur County not, they would not implement. It would still follow the local process. This, but for food and beverage taxes, you need permission actually from the State House to actually be able to implement that. So if we were able to get on the bill and got approved, this would enable us to do it. It wouldn't require us to do that. I would even suggest that if we did get permission, that we still have an accountant crunching the numbers. And I've talked to Ruben about, about the possibilities of how much to bring in. He mentioned that some of those numbers are kind of hard to come by, but he did give us an, an estimate, his estimate, and we kind of complemented that with what, you know, specific retail and, and such. Now, I will also say that Placer app deals majorly with national chains. They won't go into modern pops, so some of these estimates as far as, you know, spending, yes, that's with the national chains, but we're, we're not even capturing some of the modern pop things as well. So it, it could be more. On the first page, we have the estimated year. We really, really want to put a bunch of asterisks by that. That should be just an estimate, very, 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 none of us are accountants or anything like that. I think in Ruben, his, his calculations, his, his range was two fifty to three ten or something like that, but that was probably napkin, I think, I don't know how much time he put it, and I think he was very generous with his time on that. But we would really suggest that to be analyzed a little bit further as far as, you know, moving forward. But that, that's the work, and again, I want to stress that the, the committee side, we're just not pushing for this act, you know, pushing for, you know, any sort of, we're just exploring that as an option. And together with the opportunity at the State, at the State House's current session, budgetary session, no less. There are other cities that have been currently in the works of Columbia City and Marigold are both with food and beverage taxes. And I think there's a, from a, I believe, there's a number of other ones as well who are, are close to doing it. They see, local governments are seeing this as a means of funding particularly quality of life projects and issues, which oftentimes don't have the, the funding sources that some of the others do. I, I'm reminded of, of a conversation we had about Ready two point O, which looks to be like it's going to be funded next year. It's wonderful to have that money available, but some of the matching parts are really tough on rural communities because we have to come up with, depending on what they ask for, last time it was one to one. Sometimes those funding sources are very hard to come up with out of the budgets of, tight budgets of some rural communities. So sometimes these, these extra sources are advantageous to leverage even greater resources for, for projects and programs and the community. And one of those projects and programs, of course, would be potentially the pool. Some caveats on that taken from the, the chamber survey. Those who voted in favor, we had a good section of them saying that, you know, they would like to see it, an end, an end to it, a, a, say, shut down whatever you want to call for the tax, one, twenty years, whatever, whatever we're talking about. In hold to that. The other thing of concern for the people who voted yes were that it was going to be, excuse, or, uh, was going to be dedicated to a set project or program and not just placed in the general fund and kind of dissipated throughout. So if it was for a specific, you know, sector or a specific project, people were very favorable, so.
Any questions or comments? What's your plans look like on that pool?
The plans look like as far as...
What you're planning on doing?
We're actually, oh, you've seen that?
Yeah.
We've seen them, but I didn't know where that was.
And, and to that, to that point, I think that's approved, and again, this is an ad hoc kind of involvement. She's really kind of focused on, on trying to help solve this problem. We're going to be entertaining other, other engineers, other, other design firms as well to see if they can figure out, you know, where, you know, to include some other things. But that, that concept that, that we did, that concept that we did submit out to everybody, that will be the guiding concept as far as amenities that are in, in that, included in that. We've had some feedback from the public asking about, you know, lap pools and such. So talking to other designers, we'll see if that, that could be possible to incorporate there and see where, you know, in savings can be had, that sort of thing. We're following down in Madison, they have just announced that they are redoing their pool. Their pool was built in, I think, thirty-seven, they said. So they're due for a new one as well, and we've contacted their designers down there to, to seek for a conversation as well with some designers that have actually worked here locally as well.
Have we studied maintenance and upkeep and...
And that's where Teresa's...
I mean, because we can build it, but can you sustain it? Do you understand?
Perfect egg lay.
Do what?
Perfect egg lay.
I mean, can you sustain it? I mean, staff it and...
Yeah, I get what you're saying. I guess I was asked if the pool made any money or ever made a profit. And as it stands right now, it does not. It operates, we don't make profit each year. Very few older pools probably do. However, the newer pools that I've been visiting and studying with, they are seeing profits because their, their attendance is, you know, substantially higher than it used to be. When we put the water site in, we had a few years where our attendance went really high. I can't look back and tell you if we made a profit, but it was, nonetheless, it dropped. That's what we're after, we're after that regional draw. So the committee asked me to compile estimated, again, like Brian, we can't stress enough that everything is estimated because there's, you know, we're talking probably two years out now before this, this could become a reality. We don't know what the cost for things are going to be. But, you know, we would have income of daily admission rates, and we would, we project and propose that we're going to do an in-county, out... and propose that we're going to do an in-county, out-of-county admission fee, most pools are doing that now. We will still offer swim lessons, private pool parties, private cabana rentals, we're planning on putting pay lockers outside, our concession stand would be expanded and would be, should be of a great profit to the whole pool because of the number of people. But we are projecting that we could easily see an attendance of twenty thousand people annually. Last year, our attendance was just a little over five, five thousand. So, and that's twenty maybe a little, a little low. I mean, I'm, I'm doing this conservatively because I don't want to falsely, you know, give you any ideas of what could or could not happen. The daily attendance based on the figures that Brian, like he was talking about, most of the people honestly would not be in the four seventy-four zero area code. So we are saying that probably thirty-three percent of the daily attendance could possibly be from Decatur County, sixty-six percent could even be from out of county. That's a, based on just the figures that I shot for attendance at that time, we're looking at sixty-six thousand dollars for in-county, a hundred and sixty thousand for out of county. We had a hundred and forty-seven kids take swimming lessons this past summer, so we figure that could even easily go to two hundred, which could bring in another. Private pool parties, a ten party in the whole summer, and that's an average size party, would be forty-five hundred approximately. Cabana rentals, I realize that they're not going to rent all the cabanas every day, seventy-five days a, out of the summer, so I've based it on fifty percent occupancy. That could bring in another twenty thousand dollars. They're renting for thirty and fifty dollars a day right now, and twenty-two, that's what they were renting at the pool. Concession estimate, I, I would say easily a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And so that's an annual estimated revenue of three hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, which is way out of anything we see currently. That doesn't even include any special events that we might have as far as corporate type rentals, water walking, water aerobics, those are things that people are contacting us now wanting. Movie nights, sponsorships for public cabanas, umbrellas, life jacket rentals, locker rentals, I would imagine that would be. In twenty twenty-three, my budget for the Almond Lake pool typically is seventy to seventy-five day operation is about ninety-five thousand, five hundred and three dollars. That's what I have in the budget. So estimating off of that, and there again, I have no way of knowing exactly how much more we would use in electricity. While everything will be state of the art up to date, more economical, we would be talking about more operational costs. We'd have more water slide, we'd have more water features, more things drawing, the lazy river, more things drawing electricity. So I can't tell you that the electric's going to be less, but we're looking at the possibility of solar, adding some solar energy out there too, that might help, help us. But I'm coming up with just an estimated budget, if we were to operate the new aquatic center in the same number of days, I would say we're somewhere in the ballpark of a hundred and eighty-five, maybe a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And there again, that's an estimate. We would be saving money on some things, and some things wouldn't change, your, your cost for your phones and your, things like that are not going to change because you built an aquatic center. So some of those will stay. But there's, you know, we would have to increase our staffing, we'd have to have more lifeguards, we'd have to, some things would definitely go up. So I, I feel like, based on those numbers, I mean, we're showing almost a two hundred thousand dollar profit, and I don't know that that's unreal. I mean, I really think there's a possibility. If we build something that will draw the people to come back to our area and our pool, I think we can, I think we can see some of those numbers. But there again, I want to stress they are estimates. I do think it could become profitable facility. And I do appreciate Brian speaking on behalf of all these numbers and things that we've been.
Well, I, my associate, yes, Barker, who's been working with the place or app and the tourism office, allowing us to be able to, to have some insight that, you know, previously possibly would be very, very difficult to get as far as, you know, visits and visitors and such. But you have to echo, just that these are all, all estimates. And again, from the committee standpoint, we are a committee kind of looking for a solution. We want to present information to you guys because you guys are going, commissioners are going to be making the final decision as such on this. If there's some other information or some, you know, something you want us to investigate or look into, we'd be glad to do that as well. We just want to come with you, come to you guys with options of, of things to do and things to explore. So that's kind of what we see our, our mission as a committee.
And I do need to stress, if we, these are based on the new aquatic centers, those figures that I just did, if we were to elect to go with a, some sort of a renovation, if that would be what we're hoping for, but if that would be where we'd go, we would not see increase of revenue because we would still have the basic pool that we have now. We wouldn't be offering something new and exciting really to bring back families. We're really lacking in the younger kids. We don't have something that serves the infant toddler age for the whole family to come. This, this new aquatic center would be something that everybody in the family would have, an area that would be for them.
Bring our water facilities up to code, right?
Yes, and that, and I said that too yesterday at the meeting, once we get into this, if we do look at, you know, upgrading, if it could even be renovated, I don't even know that that's a possibility, we would probably be faced with having to batch some codes now instead of the grandfather things that are under that pool being as old as it is.
Ralph, have any questions?
I got a couple of questions on the food and beverage tax. So is that going to be something that the city and the county both will be able to use, or is it all county dollars, or?
It goes to county.
All county, okay. And then I'm assuming?
City can't implement their, their own if they were.
Okay. But they have no, that money's going to be divided in city and county, even if it's?
Yeah, as I understand it, it's only, only collected for the county board, ideally for a specific.
And then I'm assuming that's collected like the other tax goes to state and then comes back?
Like a census tax.
But it's state.
You did say you was going to put an end to life to it?
That, where there is usually an end to life to them.
I think in the legislation, they actually have that attached to it.
Yeah, I would think that would be something in favor of. Just one other question, does the visitors, Daryl, been actively involved with you guys on helping with all these numbers and all that?
Yeah, very much. It's their program that we, we use. The place or program is actually a program for the future of tomorrow, so we're, and Phil's been a great help. But they've been on the committee.
Okay.
Any other questions? Concerns?
Sure.
I'd just like to see real hard numbers is all I'd like to see.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, my, I want the pool fixed, I want something out there, I do. But I just, the last number I've seen, just hard for me to digest for something that's open ninety days a year. And you know, I've said that before, Brian. You understand, I mean, because we still have to pay for it all year long.
Yeah.
It doesn't make any difference, but it's just, you know, there's a confined time that it's, you know.
I think the idea is that within that confined time, if you're able to, if you're estimate, to be able to bring in that enough to, to help pay for that, you know, polarization around there. Because that's, that's always been the issue, is it's open to, you know, three months out of year, four months out of year for sixty years.
And it would be our intention to try to see if we could get the pool back to at least the Labor Day schedule. If we create a place that people want to work at, most of the pools that I have talked to and visited, they have a lot of adult and older people, or not older people, that's early, but adult college that they can stay, work longer. Used to, I lost my college kids first, and I finished my summer with my high school, but then with the school calendar changing, that put a whole new perspective on how we staff in the summer. So it's possible that we could increase that to a hundred day operation.
Is, is there any restrictions on lifeguards now? Somebody told me that Indiana was coming up with a deep water, to be a deep water lifeguard, you had to go to a special school or something. Now, maybe I'm wrong.
All my, all my guards are Marigold Red Cross certified, and I've never been notified about anything.
Okay. I didn't know.
I think they've all been, I, I think there might be some extra things if you're out in the lake or something different that you have to be trained for, but all of ours are Red Cross certified, so haven't been notified of any changes.
The other thing for the extension, as she mentioned, the, the kind of walking, especially with a lazy river, being able to walk against the current, I think we often will close the pool because school starts to move in when we're happy. If you get a sector of the population that wants to use it each morning and you have those walking outdoors, you obviously know that the seventy, I mean, even eighty-three weather could go as far as in September and October now.
And it is a heated pool. I mean, we pay no attention to doing live pool heater.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
We add those kind of amenities, it does allow for opportunities to, to keep that open a little bit more.
And that is something North Vernon does utilize their pool for, is with their rest and care and some of their nursing facilities, they'll bring patients out for rehab, and they do that prior to the other company. So there's an opportunity for some different things that we haven't been including before as well, that could generate even more revenue that I didn't include in any of it.
I think one thing, we, going back to what you were saying, Danny, about the cost, I mean, yeah, it's a, it's a monumental amount of money without a doubt for how long we use it, but, and you guys, correct me if I'm wrong, I've been to Shelbyville, but I don't think I've been to North Vernon, but, you know, when you go to Arpa, we have a lot of stuff out there. We got park, we got the golf course, we've got the airport, the ball diamonds, fairgrounds, and I'm not sure that, I know Shelbyville doesn't have all that around there.
No, it's in town.
It's right in town, it really nothing around there.
That's the area, it doesn't matter.
And North Vernon, I don't know where they're.
It's in the city park, right on the corner.
So, but they still don't have all that we have to offer, so people could come and do more than just swim, but, you know, if they come to swim and see we have all this stuff somewhere down the road, they might come back to park, they might come back to the ball diamonds.
Well, or if they're at the ball diamonds and they have time in between games, they've got something to do.
Yeah, so we, I think there's a little bit of an advantage of that part of it, you know, when you're looking at how much it's going to cost to put it in and how long it's going to be there. If we didn't have anything around it, it's, yeah, it makes it a little bit harder to take, but I think having all that there with it, you know, we're looking to possibly renovate the fairgrounds and do some other stuff out there, offering more things. I mean, I think it's, yeah, it's a lot of money without a doubt, but we spent twenty-two million dollars in the jail too, and we made it through that, so.
That's a year-round thing though, that's what.
Well, I said.
I mean, it's like, it's not, he doesn't, you know, it's just not, they don't open the doors for ninety days, say, come on in.
Neither, neither, it's still something that, you know, we're going to have to do something. Now, do we put a Band-Aid on something that's not going to be?
Well, I, I agree, it needs something done. I'm not, I'd just like to see a lot of hard numbers, I'm not, I'm not.
Makes a lot of power, when you look at the big picture of what's out there, I think.
I'm just not big on estimates.
Teresa, how many pools did you go and visit approximately and talk to?
We all started out as a committee agreeing field because they did a renovation, but they did some extensive renovating, adding quite a bit of things. It wasn't just a same pool. Then we also visited North Vernon, which is a new facility. We went to Brookville, has a new facility. Then we also went to Lebanon, who is pretty close to what we're looking for, size-wise and everything. And then we also went to Greenwood, which we knew Freedom Springs in Greenwood was out of our range, but it was nice to see the options that we wanted at, in our drawing, in action in another pool, just to see how they were being utilized. So we, we visited, I guess, five of them so far.
As far as, as hard numbers, I mean, you can, you can go online and I can certainly send it to you, the, the numbers of the revenue of those who have food and beverage taxes as far as what it brings in.
Well, no, that's, that's.
City and county, to give you an estimate of, of what range we might fall in.
Yeah, well, I mean, this is really till you do it the first year, you're really not going to know how much money.
Yeah.
On the food and beverage you bring in, you're just, I'm talking about build, I mean, how much are we looking at to build them, what you're wanting? I mean, you know, that's, you really can't go nowhere there, you know exactly what you're, where you're at.
And to Teresa's point, you know, we're potentially two years away from, probably doing something like this, and with the fluctuation of the supply chains and everything, the weather, cost, and price, we'll figure out what we do, but we go the opposite.
Probably not.
And we do have ready money committed to this project, right? And what is the premise of that ready money?
The ready, the ready money needs to be, all the ready funds that we reward need to be ready by twenty twenty-two, or they need to be expanded by twenty twenty-six. So just keep that in mind, as far as the, the decision making, we have four, five.
And then we have ARPA funds that we appropriated to match, as a match for that.
Yeah, we're, we're going to make a decision in some way, shape, or form, and to expand these funds by twenty twenty-six.
And ready projects are intended for what reason?
Well, precisely for attraction of a population and growth. So this is, this is something that, and particularly fall of life, housing, that kind of thing, and this wall as well, well, as in that, designated as such because they prove, prove good funding.
Ralph, have any questions, concerns?
Yeah, if anybody later, if you go home and you have any questions, then you contact Teresa or anything. Again, from a committee standpoint, we want to be resourceful with you guys. We think it's somewhat clear as far as the general direction we need to go, it's just how, how to get there and you want to, you want to get there. We don't want to jettison, take down anybody's list whatsoever. We are somewhat of a time crunch just because of the ready fund, but we want to be able to, to investigate every opportunity to, to, to make things happen.
What do we think, in ten years, or what, how long does it go to take to pay for this?
How long?
Yeah, you're going to have to leave that tax on.
Ten years, just be three point nine million according to their estimates here.
Yeah, probably, that's where it kind of goes out of our, our, as far as when it goes to bond, to bond costs.
We just have to run the numbers. We'd also have probably a public funding outreach as well, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
It's not.
And we have applied for, I did four different grants, but I'm not, I mean, they're in the process, but I don't know what the status is.
Yeah, we, I mean, we're not, we're not just put it all in a basket or anything. We're suggesting, Teresa mentioned sponsorships, allocate that to it, like, try to catch, find that as possible and go there.
Yeah, we don't intend for the food and beverage to be the only financing of the project.
Yeah, exactly.
You have any questions, Ernie? I hope I can hear me. You hear me, Ernie?
Oh, I, I, you know, I've got some hard numbers together and have a plan down the road because we've been fighting this other pool maintenance for thirty years, so we want to get something started, can't get out of it.
Yeah, I'd like to see hard numbers too.
Yeah, and as far as putting another tax on, I'm really not for that.
No, I think they closed it for the year, correct? It's closed, pool's closed this year.
For this year. Ending earlier discussion on how we proceed, I believe, the way the motion was made yesterday. No, it's closed, but I mean, they want to talk about their.
Pool's not even able to be opened, is it? Without some repair?
The pool liner most likely would not make it.
Yeah.
See how it can make it another season. It's already surpassed its lifetime, about four or five years. Patched, patched and still.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. Okay, Diana Whitting.
Good morning. This is just to go over the interest that was earned last month. And I'm also bringing forth the CD that we currently have at Napoleon. It's for a year, it matures in August, but it's earned, in a six-month period, it's earned almost three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. But currently, right now, it's, the rate that was fixed was two point six-three percent, which right now on the daily for Trust Indiana, we have investments in that, which is a daily interest, it's four point five nine four five. But could you move the CD from Napoleon? Yes, but you're taking that penalty out of there, and it's only for the latter six months, you know, and Napoleon, you know, they're part of the community, they pay their taxes, you know, so I think we're just leaving that well enough alone, but like I said, it's making three hundred and fifty-eight thousand just in the first six months, so it should give us some good money by August. And then we'll revisit it, see where the interest rates are, and then see how I want to reinvest that four million. The Trust Indiana for the last month, let's see here, it has earned over ninety, almost ninety-four thousand. So, and then the, I think the last meeting I brought up, where we took the special purpose tax and invested that three million, right now I don't have a full figure because it hasn't been in there for a full month, but it was averaging, starting out like four hundred dollars a day. So hopefully I'll have a better number to present next time around. So that's all I have. So hopefully I'll have a better number to present, uh, next time around. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thanks, Diane. Okay, I believe, Catch Ride here.
Yeah.
I don't know what you call it now, Catch Ride.
Yep.
She's an add-on.
I am an add-on. Thank you for letting me present today. Um, I'm just here to give an update on our service. And I'm not here for any sort of request or anything, that's, I just greatly appreciate you and your support of us. So, um, in twenty twenty-two, we had several changes with our service. We removed the social distancing requirement that we had had in place all throughout COVID. So we're now able to get more individuals on our buses at one particular time. We also removed the masking requirement that we had had through all of COVID, um, as well. It's masks are recommended, uh, but not required. We will, we would return to requiring masks if the high, um, community levels for COVID would get, uh, increased to a high level. Uh, we updated our logo in twenty twenty-two, and we're still in the process of getting that implemented across our six-county service area. In twenty twenty-two, uh, we served one hundred and seventy individuals in Decatur County. And they had, they took seven thousand seven hundred thirty-two one-way trips. Uh, seventy-seven percent of those trips were for elderly or disabled individuals. Our numbers remain about fifty percent of what they were pre-COVID, which is significantly low. So we, we're wondering why, you know, why our numbers haven't rebounded. So we actually put together a transportation needs survey and sent it out to a hundred and fifty passengers that had ridden with us in the past three years. We only got one hundred and thirty-six results. So we found those results to be telling, because we were anticipating seeing that people were, uh, using telehealth and, uh, telehealth, the doctor's visits, nutrition, food delivery services, grocery delivery, that those things, um, and those things did increase slightly from twenty nineteen, but not to the point where you, where we would have such a significant drop in ridership. Um, and those people that are currently using those services don't want to continue that, you know, to spend it. Something they're doing currently, but they would like to get back out into the, into the community. So we're hoping that we can do some marketing to promote our service to help get individuals back out and in the community. So there doesn't really seem, um, so we're still, you know, trying to figure out why people don't like it. Whether they're just leering, um, for COVID, they don't want to be a vehicle with people they don't know. You know, we just, I love to speculate as to why, that hopefully, um, they're relying on family, friends, maybe. Um, or we did find that some people just aren't getting out, uh, which is pretty concerning, you know, that they're just isolated, which can lead to, you know, a physical decline and social isolation just as a part of the people. So, anyway, we'll be working through this year to try to, you know, promote our service. In twenty twenty-three, we've already had several changes this year. We are now scheduling rides up to thirty days in advance again. We did that pre-COVID. Um, and now we are back to scheduling further out, which is beneficial to those that are, you know, work or doctor's visits. You know, those are things that you know you need, uh, and those individuals can get those rides hopefully more easily. Uh, we did have a fare rate increase at the first of the year also. Our standard fare is now three dollars for the first five miles and twenty-five cents for each additional mile. And our reduced fare is two dollars, uh, for the first five miles and twenty-five cents. So we're still very affordable, you know, if somebody just needs a in-town trip, it's just a couple of bucks to get wherever they need to go. Uh, we've also renegotiated some of our contracts with our Medicaid managed care brokers to bring more revenue that way as well. We've received a grant for backup and, uh, internal cameras in all our vehicles, so we plan to get those installed this year. We have a push-to-talk app on our tablets, um, but we've had some technical difficulties on that implementation process. So we're hoping to get those issues lined out, that way we can have better communication with our drivers when they're out, when they're out. Oh, vehicles. So vehicles continue to be a problem. So, um, due to the global park shortage and the federal government's push towards electric vehicles, the small transit buses that you see most readily around Greensburg are not available. Uh, we have seven replacement minivans that are coming online this year, but we haven't had new vehicles in the past three years. So, um, we are hopeful that, um, there'll be, you know, with the push towards electric vehicles, the federal government and the manufacturers, they're just not making the chassis for their small trances. And so we're not sure when or if we'll ever get those again. So we'll have to see what the state can come up with for their procurement and hopefully figure out what vehicles we can get. Because to operate electric vehicles in a six-county rural service area, it would be impossible. Not to mention the price for, everything has gone just through the roof and crazy. Our small tran, our, like, our minivans that we would get have, like, doubled in price. So trying to get grants from communities to help us with those matching funds for those vehicles. We're not asking for any of that because, because we don't run on the events here. We recently completed our annual oversight exercise with our pass-through historic Hoosier Hills, and there were no findings with that. We have two quadrennial reviews this year, uh, one with INDOT and then with ARTAP for our drug and alcohol program. So we will have a visit here this year, uh, with those. We need drivers in all areas, and our drivers are typically retirees who aren't necessarily looking for a job. They're typically just individuals who want to help their community. So if you wouldn't know of anybody that would be interested in driving for us, certainly pass them our way. They pay, it's a part-time position, uh, one, two, or three days a week. We also have occasional positions where they can just kind of say what days, they're available, and if we have a need for them, they drive for us. And then pay, starting pays fourteen dollars a month. And there's a lot of training that goes into our drivers. They all have to have a long list of qualifications. Seat care first aid, passenger assistance, defensive driving, um, pre-trip inspections. There's lots of training that goes into, uh, being a driver for us. Uh, we really appreciate, uh, your support, and if you guys have any questions for me, well, yeah. I know I talked really fast, but just.
It's okay. Any questions? Thank you. Appreciate your report. Okay, let's go backwards real quick and do, everybody got a, well, I don't know if you got an email on the salary ordinance? Did you get it, Kenny?
I did get that.
Okay, that'll work. So we need a motion to accept the salary ordinance for two thousand twenty-three right now, which could change fourteen times before the year's over. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the salary ordinance.
So moved.
Kenny makes motion.
Second.
Ashley.
Ashley seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, while we're, sign that, Ruben? Me and Ruben, I've discussed with Ruben about, was it a few years ago, we raised the special purpose tax? I discussed with Ruben about bringing it down maybe a half percent. The fund is pretty healthy, correct, Diane? And try to give back just a little bit. It's not a great big chump, but it is.
We're going the right way.
Yeah, let's put it that way. I know, I emailed everybody a copy of what was.
Yeah, you may, you may have these on there.
Yeah, I emailed everybody a copy of it, but it's nice to have a hard copy.
Yeah.
It was not on. Um, real quick to back up, I agree, if you do, if you move further in a pool, we should get more in-depth into figures. What I did is I found, the numbers are really hard to come up with, because the people that have them aren't allowed to give them out, um, unless you have an account for that particular county. And, um, so I found seven counties that their numbers are easy to dig out of and report. Run off their sales tax, get the average compared to your tax, um, your sales tax collections. And, um, based on average, it's about three hundred thousand. This odd thing is the sales tax is off about thirty million dollars last two years here, but not in the other counties. Which is out on our stats, which counties last two years, you're like, I'll cope with it, right? But just people are buying stuff. But it's thirty million dollars here, which from a hundred ninety to one sixty. And the other counties I looked at is, it's not off that much, so that's worth digging into in the future also, it's kind of. That, that really shocked me when I saw that. Anyways, that's what we're talking about today. The special purpose jail rate is currently point six-five, generating twenty twenty-three certified revenues, four and a half million. Uh, current budget hits a three point two million, which is leaving you a one point, almost three million dollar surplus. I would recommend we shoot for X, still keep a five hundred thousand dollar surplus, leave some room. There's going to be fluctuations in income, there's going to be fluctuations in budget, that's a minimum I would think we see. So assuming that, we need to be like a three point eight, seven, five at the end. That requires a rate of, this is based on today, you know, the current figures, right? Point five-five-four-nine. The only problem is, the special legislation requires it to be in increments of oh-five or zero. So we have to go to oh-six-oh, point six-oh, or point five-five. If you go into point five-oh, you're just getting too close to being there. So if you were a point five-five, you'd have a surplus based on right now of about four sixty-five. Still be able to fund everything you're doing right now in that front, you know, the, the bond payments plus the jail operations that are covered in it. And still maintain a pretty good, healthy cash flow in it. Um, and you can see the figures here, if you, if you set it at point six, you have another three hundred thousand dollars income a year. Every half is about three hundred thousand dollars, but, you know, approximately, every half of one percent. But, so, that, I mean, I don't know, I'm not going to make a recommendation to cut it, because from my standpoint, I don't like that. It makes me uncomfortable, but, because I sit in the, I sit in these meetings, you have to. But you can afford it, if you want to do that, it would give some back. Now, at the same time, I feel like I gotta throw in my Q cap development pitch that I make every year. If, because if I don't, I hope I'm doing my job. If you were to increase that to the max, you'd have an increase of revenue of about three thirty, three hundred eighty thousand dollars. That could be used for any lawful expense of the county. It would actually still be a net positive to the taxpayers, because it'd still be, there was, the lowering of the income tax would be more than what you'd increase Q cap development. It'd shift a little bit of fines and would take some heat off of the, uh, general fund a little bit still on that. So that, I don't, I mean, if there are more questions on that, we can talk about it, there's not much said, and those are the figures. It's just up to you guys what you want to do. If you want to do that, um, we just need to write up, you know, new, new ordinance to, to change that rate. That's, that's not hard to do. Just depend on when you do it, determines when that change takes effect. And I forget those dates exactly, I'll look them up if you want to make a change. So Janice is going to send us, she's thinking.
It's going to be adopted by May something, correct? May first, May thirty-first?
Doesn't have to be. Not on the income tax, does it? Income tax will be done anytime during the year, yeah. Yeah, the income tax will be done anytime during the year, and it just, that just determines when it takes effect. If you do it certain times, it takes effect October one. A certain day range takes effect January one. I mean, that's, that's, um, Q cap changes, um, are really cumulative fund change, which we have another one that we've discussed in the past right here, right? They have to be done and submitted actually by May thirty-one. The date changed two years ago from April thirty to May. I still, I still say generally April. And I'm usually wrong when I say that, because it's been that same way for so many years now. Uh, they pushed it back, so, uh, that would require legal ad, public hearing, thirty-day remonstrance. The theory of remonstrance can be going on during the submit, so it's not a, that's not a timeframe. So if you were to do that in May, um, it can still be submitted on time. And once the remonstrance period ended, we could, you know, we would submit that part of the paperwork, but that's pretty minor stuff, so. That's, um, I'll, I'll leave those up to you guys, you tell me what you want to do with them all, you know, based on what I sent you. And we can move forward on that one. Now, you want, have we been discussing about Q bridge yet or not? I mean, you asked me about that one.
Yeah, I asked, well, you were just wanting to know about Q bridge, wasn't it getting a little, having a little problem? Or going to down the road, correct?
Now, the bottom half of this page I'm giving you right now has the exact same Q cap development stuff in the bottom of it, and it should not. Um, I've been in Kansas City since Friday, so I prepared this, I realized out there, I forgot to take the bottom of it off. And I got back last night about ten-thirty from Kansas City, so I printed, and I didn't fix it, so I apologize.
We just said twice.
So anyways, so Q bridge currently sits at point oh-two-eight-three, the rate does, it's a rate-driven fund. So you got, you adopt a rate, that generates a levy. Those, those rates then will, will drop over time based on assessed value, um, increases. We've recently adopted some legislation that's going to, that will offset some of that, so it won't dilute as much over time in a lot of Q funds. Um, several years ago, I don't know where you all would have been, uh, Mark Moore did, he said, if you give me, if you take a little bit of Q bridge away, what kind of real tax, and we did that, and it's, it's worked out so far, so we're back here again discussing that, so. Uh, maximum allowable rate is point zero-three-three-three. That would increase the revenue, the levy about almost ninety-one thousand dollars at today's assessed value. Um, that would gen, and I'm going to skip down a little bit in the page, that would generate about a hundred thousand dollars total in revenue for Q bridge, nine thousand dollar levy, throw in excise, C-VET, FIT. It's about, I mean, it, it's roughly ten percent, that's close enough for a discussion today, so generate roughly another hundred thousand. The only problem with that hundred thousand is it has to be offset by the other max levy funds. So whatever hundred thousand dollars goes to Q bridge has to come off of either the general reassessment health or parking rec, or combination of them. That's the only problem with, with just even discussing this, is those five fans all sit within that pool, and they got to split that money up.
Semi-losers.
Yeah. So then that's, it is no easy way to, to come up with that discussion of how to handle it, but that's just the facts of, of where we are within the max levy. Q cap development is outside the max levy, so that, that won't affect anything. But the Q fund would, um, so I don't even want to handle that one, but that's, that's the information you have. Now, those are the figures, and that's all I'm giving you today. I'm not, maybe I'm making a recommendation, unless you want me to, I can sit down and make one, but, uh, that's come more in your guys' wheelhouse. I'll, I'll give you the answers to your questions, but, um, if you have any questions about that stuff, I filmed that you today, so Diana's got one coming at me.
So on the special purpose tax.
Yeah.
Currently at point six-five.
Yeah.
You're suggesting at the most, we should take it down to point five-five.
Yes, I am making that suggestion, that's, that's the base.
Would that make on an average household? Like, what?
Based on, that's what I was sitting last night when I was printing that stuff, and I'm thinking on, about every ten thousand dollars of gross adjusted income, I think it'd be a hundred dollars. Because it's, it's based on, it's a percentage, but, I mean, but what bothers me is when they're listed on the, on the sheet, it lists as point, say, um, point six-five percent, which to me, when you do move the decimal spot two points, right? About ten thousand dollars, that's only one dollar. That isn't making any sense either, so it's, I mean, I think it's listed wrong when it says a percent. Um, I've never dug into the, into the bills to look at the actual dollar, but I believe it'd be a hundred dollars for every ten thousand dollars of adjusted gross income. I can confirm that, but just.
That would make a difference to me, for sure.
Yeah. I mean, if it was a dollar, I don't think it poss, it couldn't possibly generate four and a half million dollars, I wouldn't think. And there's not four hundred and, that'd be fourth point. I can do the math, that's a big number, right? Four hundred fifty-three million dollars in, in income, adjusted gross income in the county? I don't think so.
Myself, I would, I mean, I'm, for going down a half percent, just in increments, because of, we get a layoff. You know, and I mean, there's, there's a possibility, if we get a recession, we get a layoff. recession, we get a layoff, or there's somebody like that.
We can do that, and then next year.
And then look at it next year again. Now, that was my suggestion, do it in little increments.
We've got this property tax issue coming down from the state too that we haven't.
Yeah, we're gonna, you didn't come to that one, did you?
So then we get that, they get that figured out, we're all about to go.
That's, that's not gonna help anybody. That's not gonna help anybody at all. That affects state, but it sure does affect you all.
I would definitely be in favor of taking a half.
Yeah, I'd like to see a go of .6 myself.
Yeah.
.6 total.
.6 salary?
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I said, you guys can discuss that, because we got time on that one, that's, that's not, there's not much of a time crunch on that, so I said, you know, just, you know, just push the implementation back a little further if you took, you know, six months to discuss that one, but if you want to do it, let me know, and we can write up that um, ordinance for that. That's, and that's, that's a real easy, real easy problem. You know how easy it was when you guys adopted those, I mean, it wasn't hard to do, it was just meetings.
We wouldn't hope it wasn't very easy.
Yeah. It's easy in terms of paperwork, but that.
Going up, but easy.
So, I mean, so that's, um, yeah, I would, I mean, point, I answered your question, .55 is my, is the floor I would recommend, period, if you want to say a six. Um, I wish you could go in increments inside there, but they just won't allow it because of the way it's written. I mean.
I'd like, yeah, I'd like. You can do one every year if you want to.
You could, you could change it all the time. If you have, if you see something, you need to go back up and go back up, if it won't go down in the future, go down a more, that's no problem.
You all discuss Q cap?
I'm gonna discuss it, but I'll, we're not making any decisions today.
No, I don't, no, I don't.
I've got a chance to digest that for a few too long.
You want to think about it? We can talk about that. I think we've got another month or so to talk about it, don't we? Q cap?
Q cap dollars.
We would need, we would need, we would have to, the latest you can adopt it would be the May meeting, um, which then we have to turn around and get it advertised, which, does your paper advertise every day?
No.
Once a week?
Three times.
Okay, see, I mean, so you're not talking about, because you guys meet earlier in the month, if you met later in the month. But no, you're, you are later in the month.
Third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday.
Hope we talked about it in.
Next month.
Next month.
Yeah.
March, Aprils, March, April.
Yeah, if you were to do it in your May meeting, we just had to have the paperwork prepared.
We don't have to, we don't have to go max. I mean, we could, there's.
Right, you can do it in, yeah, you can do it in, yeah.
Those dollars are taxed to the.
Hate to give it back and then take it.
What's your property tax, property tax revenue?
No, no, take it.
Because this Q cap comes out of what, property tax?
Property tax, yeah.
Oh, man.
Well, it was first time in the meeting, I was.
Oh, help me.
Well, the first time it's been about this whole thing, I was driving every day, listening to the radio, and they're talking about, uh, property tax, this and that and so forth, where I mean, there was the big push years ago, that, you know, because the last year, the town of St. John, they wanted market value, because then it happened, and they feel fit because their houses were worth $900,000. So now, and everybody, you know, that's the solution, right? So now everybody's house values are up, taxes are up, and all throwing a fit, because, I mean, that was the obvious end result of this, but nobody wanted to look at that 20 years ago. Yeah, you guys, you know, talk about them, and just, you know, if any of you have questions, you can, you know, reach out to me directly or as a group, or who, I mean, everyone do it, and we can talk about numbers and timeframes and so forth. Um, Q bridge would be on the same schedule as Q cap as far as getting those done, and they could be done at one time. If you want to do, if you do, we can do them, if you want to change both of those, they can be changed in the same process. Two different ads, I suppose, technically, and two different resolutions, but same timeframe.
Depending on this public health legislation that's going through right now, there's going to be a lot of money pumped into, to potentially the health part, so if you were to have to make an offset, that would be something we probably.
Well, that's, was my.
Yeah, you were exactly right, yeah.
The health department's probably the most healthiest of the, of the bunch.
Yeah, I mean, we've gotten there the last few years, we've done a good job just kind of moving those levies around just to keep those three, those three departments.
They've got great.
Books.
Ain't no tomorrow here, before long, I believe, the way they're talking.
Yeah.
Well, if everybody thinks about it, we'll bring her up next meeting.
Let me know if you, yeah, let me know meantime if you need something, or whatever.
Don't forget.
Now, I have to take out my trash dump, go home and pack, and go to New Orleans for five days.
I said, don't forget my commission, now, buddy.
You're off, I'm gonna get built for that.
That's being recorded.
I don't care. Okay, let's go on to, anybody else have anything before we move on to transfers and additions? Todd?
I wanted to report, I've already reported to the commissioners, but I came to you guys to talk to you about the note called, uh, maintenance of bridges. And originally, my consultant had approached me with this because they knew about what we did, and we were going to be able to affect 28 bridges in Decatur County for $4 million in a million dollar match. When it came down all the way to the end, four of them wasn't going to be in that criteria, so we were down 24 bridges. All right? Then we kept going down and up on money, down and up on money. At the very end, okay, I was going to be able to affect 12 bridges for $10 million in a $2 million match. That's not the impact that I was wanting for the county. So I was going to have to pick four or five bridges for the million dollars, which is not what I was going after. So, uh, talked to Mark, talked to Danny, I decided to withdraw from that. Our bridge inspection is due this year for a county-wide bridge inspection, I want to take a look at that after that, and see if this call comes out next year and what kind of success it had this year. Uh, surrounding counties, Jennings County pulled out, Rush County pulled out, so it's not as good as originally it was intended to be. Uh, I did talk to a gentleman, Kevin Russell, over in Harrison County. I think he did a lot of the work himself, I'm hoping to meet him at road school, but he went after 21 bridges for eight and a half million dollars in a 1.6 match. But I think he did a lot of the work himself, um, to do that. I think he was the push behind this whole note thing, so I'm hoping to make contact with him at road school, just to kind of pick his brain a little bit. So, if anything, we've decided to hold off and reassess it this next year. But I just felt like I needed to report to everybody.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do the transfers. Everybody had a chance to look at those? I think most of it's health insurance, except for Mr. Coles. Anybody have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve the transfers.
That's the move.
Bill makes a motion.
I'll second.
Ashley seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's move on to Q cap. I think we're redoing this one because it got advertised, didn't get advertised right, correct?
Correct.
$42,450. I think we approved it last time for hardware, software, furniture from our budget.
How much is it?
42,450. So, I entertain a motion to approve the additional, or additional appropriation of 42,450 for hardware, software, and furniture.
I'll make that motion.
Deanna makes a motion.
I'll second.
Melanie seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, ARP additional. We got one in here for $18,920 for radios. Is that what I'm reading right?
Yes.
Yep, radios.
It's the city of Greensburg's reimbursement, it has to go into cash and then get appropriated back in.
Oh, we break it back.
So that's money coming in, is that what we're saying?
It's already.
Transferred back in.
They're being transferred back in?
It's been receiveded into the cash, it has to be appropriated by the.
Okay. I entertain a motion to approve a denim 13 for $18,920 American Rescue Recovery Plan.
Ashley.
I make the motion.
Ashley's motion?
Second.
Kenny seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Did you get that, Ernie?
Yes, sir.
We got one at a time here. Okay, EMD Code Red, is this, this is for that new software, Brad?
In the occasion, yeah.
For, was it take place of Nixle? 305,000?
That's also, go ahead, Brad.
But also for 828 sirens in the county.
For, oh, for sirens too?
The Code Red.
Did you get that, Ernie?
Yeah, that's for sirens, Rapid County.
That's for tornado sirens and replacing Nixle.
That covers the whole county right now, the whole county's covered? It's the rural areas, yeah.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, concerns? Entertain a motion to approve 305,000.
Who moved?
Kenny made that. Ernie seconded.
That's 305,000.
Any other discussion?
What do you say?
305,000.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know what I said.
Okay, just straight.
It's just numbers.
Once you sign this, it's, it's official anyway. Okay, 110,000 for body cameras.
Yep.
Everybody knew about that one, but I think that was announced at the last meeting, so we just need to approve it. Entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Bill makes a motion.
I'll second.
Ashley second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's give you the whole thing now, we'll get back down to Janet. Okay, Decatur County Visitors Commission, we just need our signature, Jan?
Yes, you appointed him last December, I believe.
We need, don't need a motion, do we?
No, no.
Okay.
We just need signatures because that's his oath.
Okay, we'll sign that in a minute. Anybody else have anything? I think the only thing we have to do, change this additional to 10,000. See if I can find it here.
If we take out things that we have.
There you go. I think that's what Janet told me to do.
Yes, I mean.
You need three signatures on here, or everybody?
I prefer everybody.
Do I?
I prefer everybody.
Okay.
But that's, that was their form, so.
What is today, 21?
Yep.
Here, everybody sign that. Okay, pass that back down, and we'll do that next meeting. That's all I have on the agenda. Anybody got anything else for us?
Hey, just a quick update on the ARPA funds, uh, where we are with all the projects that we have funded. We have around $920,000 left that we haven't designated yet, so, and we have a fair amount of money set aside for different projects that we're still working on. So I think that we've done, been able to take that $5 million, do a lot of good in the community, so we're pretty proud of what we've accomplished on that. But we still have $900,000 left, so.
Was anything appropriate for broadband?
No, our EMC came to us about that project, and they, but they never came back, but.
I think they're still working on some of their grants.
They've had some monstrous projects.
I know it is.
We, you know, we listened to them and told them that we would possibly help support if we could, and we had it up in the back for them. We've done a lot of, done a lot of things for them, we've got the EMA to take care of, the body cameras, and just multiple projects, and I think they will take that money and do a lot of good, keeps it out of the general fund, off the taxpayers.
Oh, I'm tickled, especially body cameras and stuff, I just, I hate to dig around and try to fund something up.
I can list off really quickly what we have paid for out of ARPA funds. We had a part-time investigator that we added for two years. We've got the ready match appropriation for the Aquatic Center. Um, we gave money to volunteer fire departments, not-for-profits, small businesses, uh, 911 upgrades, cybersecurity for the county, uh, helped the magistrate get started in the courts. Um, we had, uh, local towns, Milton, not Milton, New Point, uh, Westport that we supported, and St. Paul. Um, we have a fairground study going on for best use of the fairground, um, updating the county website, so they'll have more access to information. Uh, Blight in Westport, a group that did the Blight in Westport, uh, the Inclusion Park out at, uh, the park out by the library, uh, the jail tenants for the outside area, EMA and the sheriff. We have money set aside for mental health yet that is not included in that $900 that Kenny told you, and also potential money for our structure here at the courthouse.
How's the website, Kevin? Are we, are we getting?
We've hired someone to do that, Chuck's working with them, so, um, that Schidler here in town. So those are all the things we've done with our money, and still have about a million dollars left.
Working on a new county-wide logo, we started that process.
Okay, yes, sir?
I want to thank you and Dave for setting up this Zoom for me. It worked great, everybody looks really nice.
You need glasses, you think we all look good? Especially me. Ain't no problem. Thanks for participating.
You're welcome.
Okay, only thing we got left, sign this book. You want to entertain a motion, do, unless anybody has anything for us?
One more thing.
Go ahead.
Last, last, uh, last meeting, you guys passed the Regional Development Authority ordinance, uh, now, and I spoke to Janet, and Janet, I haven't heard back from, from Chris yet, so I just thought maybe it would, to be safe, ordinance does need to have two readings unless there's a resolution to forego it. Uh, and I don't think there was one before that, uh, even though it passed UAMIS, UAMIS the last meeting, uh, we did, we did forego, we ruled whatever to, to allow it to stand, so I would suggest maybe, maybe a vote for a second reading for this party.
The only question I have, I wasn't doing my homework until I read the minutes. It says they can instill a tax?
They have, they have the ability to do that, we don't plan to do that, but we have Blight on the state statute, that, that organization.
I mean, let's, just, so.
It would have to pass local.
It would have to come through us for, okay, well, I didn't, I didn't want somebody from Shelby County, look what we're gonna do to Decatur County.
So, with that, I think Janet would not clean, clean things up, because they have a second, uh, second reading, it's been advertised since, since November, I think this was originally, that was, so.
You need a motion, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know what number ordinance it is.
I don't either, I don't have it.
It's 117, 2020, I'm sorry, 2023-1.
2023-1?